Like to walk everyone from all the city council meeting in order to see if it's applicable.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Williams, do our executive session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And one of the purposes for which the special moving of counsel for the fall is to allow the counsel to confirm. We legal counsel about matters of pending litigation, Mr. Lang has traveled out here for a little. So if you can discuss these various cases with counsel, I mean, under a lawful review, separate motion with respect to each pending case. The first one I am going to request executive session on is a case now pending before the panel, the panel, the court of justice, entitled Burgundy Women versus Deborah Power. This is an action that occurred in Cleveland seeking to commence class action litigation against basically all the municipal courts are a file, but defiance, defiance in the whole, in some ways specifically cited about a woman who's defendant. Definitely, I'm representing this, or I'm ensuring that we're meeting with, I hope the performance of counsel, that we bring Mr. Ryan here to serve counsel, that his litigation is in Cleveland, Mr. Ryan would speak for that, so I would ask that he be the defendant.
Is a motion for that executive session by Mr. Engle? Thank you. Second amendment plan, roll call please.
Mr. Engle.
Yes.
Mr. Reston.
Yes.
Mr. Plant.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes. The second one is pending in the court of justice, defiance, county, with military versus defiance, this is official review case, which is an allegation of a person's behavior by a particular party, a public party, way. Lorimer, she handles the defendants, the members who came to the mission, and the defense counsel, the insurance company, the chance, and this would be about the thing that you do, three counsel on establish the reason.
Is a motion for that executive session?
Um.
Second, is there any further, second, Mr. Engle, roll call please.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Plant.
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum.
Yes.
Mr. Reston.
Yes.
And the third.
Actually, when I sent the memo out and did these instructions to prepare the agenda, the statement is the purpose to call five executive sessions, I've been reminded, two of these cases have now been solidated, so the lawyer before the third is a separate case. But the next item to address, the litigation Mr. Hubbard has brought against the city, and the litigation of Mr. Holstberry has brought against the city, both seeking cash payments in lieu of insurance health insurance payments that were not paid during past years insurance on the counsel. As both of those cases, Mr. Lang, that has been retained by counsel, and then the counsel is press over to community staff to work in their case, considering both the cost and fees and physics of first final disposition, just a description of the law, the process, the other case, the other third case, the staff is solidated, but essentially the other case is filed first, so it's now just sitting there until the other third case gets up. Mr. Lang will discuss both of those matters in the same executive session. I think the only other experience, I understand, for giving it from this payment in retrospect, so I would view the absence of Mr. Holstberry, the defense attorney, or, that Mr. Lang is seeking to be afforded a term for this case, so we'll be meeting again to discuss this side of the issue.
Thank you. And a motion for that executive session by Mr. Engle, second amendment plan, roll call please.
Mr. Engle.
Yes.
Mr. Engle.
Yes.
Mr. Reston.
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes. The final one. The final one is Mr. Hubbard is also suing Mr. Plant, Counselor Handy, Counselor Ketchum, and me. And again, Lorimer, thanks for telling Mr. Lang of the city's attorney from Rosebud, who he's been on practice, whenever this has come up, for all of the people who have been in the new group of defendants, absent themselves from the road. So that executive session would be through the way of Mr. Ryan, Mr. Lambert, Mr. Reston, and Mr. Engle, to meet with Mr. Lang and the provided staff, for the initial expectations of proceeding. That would be the, the motion would be to conduct that, I understand, then, Mr. Holstberry, who is important, who also absent themselves from the structure.
Is a motion for that executive session?
Um.
Mr. Plant, roll call please.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Plant.
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum.
Thank you.
Mr. Reston.
And if I might, Mr. Plant, Mr. Ketchum, well, we have set ourselves for the discussion between the cities of facts, Mr. Lang is also defending our city, so if any of you wish to be knowing the after the news, first of all, the facts of what we do, in the way of the counsel, more and more, and they're dependent upon.
In regards to the final executive session, I hope it's with counsel's concern, agreeing that Mr. Reston on that portion, he wants to just make himself an advocate for the citizens, of course, of course. All right, as I've been said, we'll move to our legislative agenda, the second reading.
Secondly, the caption on the government's operators and the civil administrators turn to into a premium without permanent transportation to meet the administration, the federal funds allocated to the city providers, such as the about 111 viaduct safety and equipment.
Okay. I just want to kind of update counsel and citizens, they had a conversation with Karen Moore, for you of CSX, I'm kind of like, hey, Chairman, I can't make a comment. I want to say that we did have a nice conversation about Clinton Street project, and I do believe she was open and honest about that. The CS, the bridge department has reviewed the Clinton Street Bridge project, although they have not learned her something, saying she does believe in a semi-construction of the involved agencies system, coupled with the fact that there is a threat in tracks above the viaduct, that replacing or reconstructing the viaduct is not feasible, and does not see them making any changes to the current structure at this point. CSX views the viaduct's current condition as functional and safe as is. They understand that the city and the state have safety concerns, yet they do not share the same concerns operationally. When accidents happen, we do not create that create adverse effects or costs to the structure that has been recorded. Karen did acknowledge that they do send a crew out to inspect, that it does not cost what has been recorded on the bus. In fact, that was due to the documentation file, which was unable to find supporting information for the cost reported, Karen stated. If the cost was high, or that high, CSX will be the first one standing, why can't you replace the bridge to offset this cost? She also, while reviewing the documentation, she mentioned that of all of the hits, the structure has taken over the hundred years or so, there is no documentation stating the tracks have ever moved out of the line, stating this is based on the viaduct's construction method used, where the structure and the tracks are not connected to each other, and they're protected by the structure between the jacks and the shocker. The question is, professionals are not concerned about the durability of the viaduct and the viaduct's safety, in my opinion. When we talk about the aesthetics of the project, we go through, CSX, it's not about how something looks, they're concerned more about the functionality of the structure. At the end of the day, what we see today, and what we'll see when the project is completed, we discuss paint, the CSX will not repaint the structure due to the lead contained in the old paint, they will have to remove, as in the UK, that would choose the wrong concrete around the structure, this will only be replaced if it is found to be unstable. The pillars, as these are part of the current structure, it's unlikely they will be changed into something smaller, and removing them is not an option. As we discussed in the past, on the funding, it is $200,000, and this looks to be the best they will offer. As stated in the July 12, 2011 letter from CSX, $200,000 offered can be used to offset expected railroad-related expenses as part of the project. The preliminary order of magnitude of the railroad expenses is $30,000. This will cover permitting, flying, and engineering costs. Currently, Karen is projecting $70,000 in cost, and is very concerned about being under the viaduct. CSX will have all engineering plans approved by their engineer, and they are to be paid from out of the $200,000. The questions and concerns that I've raised in the past, what happens if three to five, three to 20 years after this project is completed, the structure that has been lived for 100 years now has issues in engineering costs? Who pays? Who's the authority? What happens if during the construction, and the crew the city hired, that's something to the viaduct causing problems, or everything really costs now? Who pays? Who's the authority? The current projects cost provided by our finance director shows projected cost of 585,000 for the viaduct project. I also suggest we add the projected $70,000 into that cost, bringing it to 655,000. Minus the $200,000, this leaves the citizens of the viaduct responsible for 455,000. And that's if all the engineers agree to the first original settlement. Any previous agreements, of course, will increase engineering costs for CSX, that are paid from the $200,000 or off. I understand we should project the cost, yet there are mostly engineering costs, so much savings can truly be made. I understand that mixing the three projects may reduce some of the costs, yet the new engineer, Manik and Smith, suggested a savings of $128,000 between the two projects that were already done tonight, leaving the viaduct with a projected cost of 381,000. America stated several times, in Davis, where this project will not cost us to provide the money. This has not been supported by the facts. If it is truly a safety issue, why not let the state and CSX do the project? Why does the city and the branch need to be involved? This involves a state road, railroad road, viaduct. I found in the Hoover World in 2003, current members of this administration and counsel were present, presented with a laser beam signal project. A local newspaper state, the counsel was going to approach a CSX with the idea that a cost of $20,000 per se, that no action was taken. It was also recently suggested that this current counsel is not concerned with safety. It has also been suggested that if we walk away from the project, and we can define some black eye with the state funding agencies, will the safety really go up? I have also heard women who wrote that is a stupid argument. I would also remind everyone that eliminating truck traffic downtown is a stupid argument. At a Google Merlin study session, you were against the project if it was going to cost us anything in the place. Our city administrator asked, are we willing to walk away from the project if the CSX is not covering any costs of the funds? The current members of counsel at the time said that CDX, CSX did not believe the funds, that we were willing to walk away. And not so much against the project, as I am concerned with its funding liabilities and responsibilities, we might be placing on our citizen as citizens. And then again, is eliminating one safety issue, creating another issue we have not talked about. At the end of the day, I wonder why we don't let the state oversee the project? Isn't that what we're totally going on tonight? Who's going to oversee the project? Would this eliminate the risks associated with changing something that is not part of our purpose?
You want a little picture of him?
Mr. President, you know, Mike is, liability question, of the emails by everyone in the council, talking about, is the city opening itself up to that, doing, is there a safety problem, and the fund is held, and the chooses not to, I haven't mentioned anybody, because we got on a bunch of calls, starting with you, and too much back before the email, to be experienced in discussion, but I would, I would pretty much just like the, the sure we do, if we're dealing with, and that's what, the question is, is this a part of the project, benefits of the communities, worth the cost, legislative decision, present to our, we've got, it's one of those forms of unity, or sovereignty, in this thing, whether you choose to do it, or you choose not to do it, as long as, as long as the discretion is being exercised, or legislative form, and a good thing, I'm confident, and what we have, sovereignty, there is, as Mike all that, maybe too, like, a possibility of some sort of obstructionary liability, if, you know, by whatever, so there's a practical matter, therefore you hire a contract, therefore you acquire the insurance, so, and all of our contracts, required, I hope you said, earnings, we're going to study the third part, and calling your name, you won't do that, your forms, and you will, so I have a distinction with you, a little bit on that, and you've got, for any of the work you make here, you've got policies that you make here, and liability, you're using for significant damage.
And the funding, and I said that nothing of the monit, the cities, 1.5 fund, we won't spend any citizens' tax dollars, I'm part of the police, the police and tax, our money's will come from money to be at the last of the sale, things like that, that will come, they'll be, they can only use for street projects and boat projects, we use those for the max numbers. I feel this is a project like, like the North Side, I think that the ODOT goes actually the way you said, and I feel that's a project goes forward, but they may see the value of the region's quickly adding funds.
Thank you. All right, for discussion this, I was telling about, so you was going to tell me, we're down, down, okay, it's easy, but we're, we're in a lot of viaduct, we can find out, but we don't do it down, down, back down. That's a stupid thing, that's something, a stupid change of plans, you're looking at, eliminating down.
Actually, these protections, even though they're not, seem, I think, closer than what the actual application form for the safety. And I know that there's been a lot of questions about exactly, why do we look at this, and if I can give you some background, I think the one thing that, that you have to remember is, that the safety funding application, that was submitted in, it was 2010, that's quite a long time ago, I don't know what's it going on about. The short-term recommendation was written into the introduction of your, was to, the short-term recommendation was to actually install an overheight vehicle protection system, work ahead, the city recently made in September of 2010, with a reduced scope project, that focused on improving the load clearance. We informed ODOT at the time, that we could have had some better detection system by trying to, to learn, to see, I think that the viaduct project, as a history of, they put these signs up, if you look at the downtown area, in front of the armory, there's a hole with the clearance sign there, and probably would do that, you put a number of different things that we looked at, tried to alert truck drivers that the clearance could be low, and it just seems like nothing worked. So in terms of actually looking at a protection system of some type, back in 2010, we decided not to pursue that, we actually just decided to pursue the more of a lowering of the road thing of strategy for violence. The other thing that I think is important, Mr. Ketchum, you had actually, had asked, why doesn't ODOT oversee it? Overseasing it at their own expense would be one thing, because they would still, in order to get this money, it is a 90/10 project, we do have the capability, Lee, that we could have given it to ODOT to actually manage, and we wouldn't have had to really worry about it. We decided to put that in our own hands, because we really know that during the course of the action taken here, I think it's become more and more evident that we want to make sure that there's communication to neighborhoods, public meetings are going to be very necessary to this project, I think, I think anyone here would have to admit that that's kind of true. The other thing is, is that the cost of the project is something that's been a moving target for a very long, and looking into the application process, I know that we've done some calculations, and come down to, well, we might have to pay 128,000, or we might have to do this, if we combine them, we can get the planning to source. I think the truth of the matter is, we are not going to know, and I think we stayed before, we're not going to know the costs associated with the project until you move forward, to detail any more, and, not that we couldn't pull the plug then, because I think that we probably could, it may not make people happy, but at the same time, as you get into detailed engineering, it becomes more and more evident what the cost associated, and what the cost is going to be for the municipality. We don't know that, I mean, we're only guessing as to, what, you know, what's a 90/10 match, we have to come up with engineering, how much of the, as ODOT, or as CSX, that they're going to contribute 200,000, 70,000 is going to be used for their own permitting, or they're going to have to use that, and I think that there's just a lot of question about what exactly are the costs associated with this project, and the truth of the matter is, we don't know, we just don't know, and we won't know until you get into the detailed engineering of it, and even when we get into the detailed engineering of it, you're not going to really truly know until you decide that the project, then actually, it will be there for you to look at. I know there's been a lot said about the viaduct project, whether or not it's a good project or not, or whether or not we should be asking more from CSX, and I think the truth of that is, is look, we're lowering the road, so, and really, we are going to be looking at the viaduct itself, and the structure, and continuity of containers, and things like that, and as we dig down to the digging, and actually going into the soils, and boring in there, and starting to dig that up, and looking at the stability of those concrete structures, we just never going to know, and I think for that reason, if you look into the application, the application itself had a contingency of 25%, that 25% was 450-some thousand dollars, which is a pretty chunk of change, and I think that, to be honest with you, my fear, as well as anybody's fear, is that once you start digging under a structure like that, it's going to be harder to salvage from a time, and I think that, I think that the engineering policy, and actually the planning, providing a 25% contingency on a project such as this, is there because, you know, it's not.
The, just one point of clarification, because the other, one of the many past councils, we would have had to pass the CSO project for that section, we had said before, is the intent still to put all three together, in certain same timeline ratio, to be, put we.
You say all three, you're talking about the smothered grant, the viaduct, and sewer.
Right.
I think in my conversations with, with Lee, an engineer for sewer work, is that we're more than likely going to do the sewer work first, and we're going to find out what's down there, and I did ask them if we could have the project into all of this viaduct project, and if we're going to do that, and I'm not suggesting that we do do that, but that would have to be, we'd have to change the scope of the existing bid that's going out, which is actually the sewer work, and I think that we have a chance to add it then. Let's do that contract by February 12. Yeah, something like that. So if we're going to change the scope of the sewer work, and we're going to do it and try to move it, we would have to do so through the bender of bidding process, because we are currently bidding this project, and I believe that those deals, are they going to be put up by the 14th, or 15th, given the 14th. So when you get done with it, you have to have them by the 8th. The other thing to remember about the sewer work, is that we have other grant monies, like OPWC monies going in, we have a $275,000 grant going in for that sewer work, from the Ohio Public Works Commission, and that has good lines attached to it as well, so I'm not saying that we couldn't do it altogether, but I, but from what I found out today, I can tell you that that sewer work is probably going to fit that road, and they had talked about actually having one lane open and completely closing it, but I think they're probably looking at a month.
My, my question, I just follow up on that, is, do we not have to have a detailed engineering done before we start going into the sewer work, or is that part of the?
We do it, that detailed engineering is done, and that's going to be part of the sewer.
But that, that will impact the viaduct, that's really separate.
They're going to ensure that that sewer is low enough to, obviously, to bring up the water.
Mr. Reston, a little deeper.
If the project's not through the viaduct, and go ahead and do the sewer work, are they going to stay there for?
Mr. Reston, your question?
On the, where is the, since a sewer's going to be down, low enough to accommodate a lowering, if it's not done now, it may be done later, if it's down deep enough, where is that, where does it empty out? Where, where does it go? Everything else is higher.
It's actually going back toward, side, going back side.
After going back side, okay, I assume that.
Right.
So what, where it ties in is already needed.
So, what, where it ties in is already needed.
It's going to go to, we're doing down by the cemetery, stop the Sunday Street, with it repeating throughout.
So, you're going through, you're going from the biaduct all the way to the remainder? That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Question, I have to use a, I had a couple of business in front of me, front of some firework. Are you going to eliminate or not to eliminate the biaduct?
I've got the same, same going, but you're not talking about that. I do, I think we have to, look, Williams Street and Davidson are two roadways that are going to be looked at in the project. There's not the detailed design on it, but I can tell you, preliminary designs show that they want to look at a wide in, wide out concept. And the reason they want to do that is because that's site restricted. And when they're turning, let's say that you're on Davidson, and you want to turn left to go north on Fulton Street, you have some real challenges there from the motors to take a look, because if you've got parked cars along Fulton Street, you're not going to, your site is somewhat restricted there. Your site is somewhat restricted when you look to your right and you're looking at traffic south, and if those pillars are there and you're having trouble. And actually, so you're, that's something that can tell you, you had to kind of creep out there. We, we do have issues. And what's going to happen way in this project is, it's going to have a bunch of impact on the business. And that car wash could be impacted somewhat, somewhat, very similar to what you saw out north with those median pillars out there on North 66. Because I know that we had quite a few people tell us about that and how it might impact the business. But the truth of the matter is, is that we do have to provide safety in that corridor. And I can't really tell you whether or not we would do that. I think preliminary looks of that would say whether we're really going to take that into consideration. But one of the nice things about having a city left project and having us being controlled of it is, and ODOT may have a say in this, but look, I mean, we can tailor this to obviously create the kind of traveling margins that we want. I happen to think that that could be dangerous. I also happen to think that if you're going northbound into the biaduct and you want to turn left on Davidson, that that creates stop traffic and litter work, a lot of times system where inclusion, so, there is a, there is a, a different part.
From the traffic islands where it's shallow?
I don't think you can see islands in that area, but you might have signs that say going around on Davidson and on the north.
Your, Mr. Ford, my wife was in a severe, really, when I turned left on Davidson, that was a bit of an emergency. And coming out of Davidson, turning left on the front, it's terrible. Most of the time, you're saying, oh, I actually looked underneath the vehicles, the tires coming out, because you can see it at the top of the road.
And the thing to keep in mind too, is you're going to be favoring that road if you decide to gear for strike deck. And that might create some other site, so I think that that has to be visited in your look.
Just a comment on the left turn. I had, I had a business on Fulton Street where you took the left hand turn northbound away from, because you needed more staffing or the southbound for that left hand turn. I think that was mainly the reason for it. It did impact my business for probably somewhere between two and four months before the, my regular customer found their way, learned their new route. And it was never, it was never major. Because if they were going to turn left, they turned left, and they're still turning left at that line. I mean, I see it, I'm around there, and I see it still, but, you know, so be it.
One more question. Need a disruption in the biaduct, using it from the south or north? So, do you do the sewer or the?
Look, I mean, don't open it enough because, like I said, we haven't done the detailed engineering. I can only tell you that the biaduct, or the, potentially, or you could open one line. My experience so far in this city, we're living on one line, we can go out to state route, 15, 18 on that, on the interchange out there. I'm not really forward opening one line, having it right on and on and on. I think more than likely, I would think that we should have that, but let's get this in the line and try. But, I mean, that's, that's something.
I would public for a while, and if that's what happens, we can, we can, we can publish, we can, we can, we can.
I'm holding 1917 Darvishar. I don't know, pardon, no guy don't understand. I think the question we have to find out, obtain the information. I think that the biaduct issue, my opinion, could be done. I think you could, go through the sewer project, open it up, run it on the biaduct, or go further to the east or the left. I don't think you should do it on the biaduct. And I think he explained very well on the liability. I, liability is a very important thing, and at large expense, the engineering, the engineering, I think we have other areas of concern, such as building a, another reservoir to, for settling, of, of contamination of, like, the sewer water and that way. But I'm convinced by quick, we'll get two reservoirs. One for settling, and one for bringing water back. No?
No. Actually, if you look at our reservoir, it's got, actually, three different places you can draw water from. You draw water from the bottom, the middle, or the top. And if you go to the south end of that reservoir, that water's being pumped into the south end, and it's being taken back to that point in the north.
Okay.
One other thing to come in, maybe we've got a capability that we should try, we just, we need okay, the sewer to be used to the west, because we're not talking about a sanitary sewer. We're talking about drains that the water up from under the biaduct. So, it has to be underneath the biaduct.
I just, you know, I just, I.
Correct. We're talking about it in terms of the sewer, because as the water fills up in that pressure, it goes through the skin into the combined sewer system, and, and that's what's creating the problem through the sewer. And the way, the only way to address it is to provide a storm drain. And, and so that's, that's what it's going to be, and the storm drain is what works for us, according to the law of court.
Mr. Ford, we did, when we originally built the reservoir, we bought enough property to build another cell, okay? And we did that because we wanted to make sure that from an expansion standpoint, we would try to tie those cells together somehow, if we could. So, when you talk about another reservoir, we did have plans for expansion, and we bought enough property that if we ever needed another cell, or perhaps we look at it and we need more storage, that, that we would build it.
Okay, that's what, you know, I, I'm thinking down that line, that there was supposed to be another reservoir or settling. No, I, you know, I just feel that we got another area to consider, and I didn't put it right, and we're trying to accomplish that thing. And that's the question again, I think you, uh, the biaduct costs, can you?
Anyone else want to go? I've got a gentleman in the news there.
Okay.
Come on.
Okay. Phil Dapsey with KFC. My big concern is, as you stated, you shut that road down for a month. What they get out of the office is a little bit different, you have ways to get in and back. We don't have that luxury. You close that down, we destroy our lunch. As far as the biaduct going down, I think you're just, you're inviting more truck traffic at 35 miles per hour. Anybody taking a left, I think you're going to cause another hazard. You put a median down that, you're believing in our restaurant? And we're going to have to go right and around?
Nobody talked about that.
No, I'm just, I'm just suggesting, if you try and alleviate one problem, I think we just reinvent more of our laws that we're not looking at. Because between us and Jerry Green, I could probably guess, on a daily basis, you know, four or five hundred cars coming out of those lots, and sixty to seventy percent taking a left out of that.
Are you opposed to turning right anywhere?
Yes, I am. Well, like I said, you know, I'm not totally opposed to it until you see it, and obviously, this is what this is all about, we'll see the final thing. But I just want to let people know that. We don't have the options that they did have out north. We don't have a back entrance. We've got to worry about that.
So, there's going to be some business impacts with this.
Right, well, I'm just.
I know, anybody who says that, I want to.
Well, yeah, but, I get that, and I, and I understand there's going to be, but every time it seems we do a project in this town, six months, ten months, five months, nine months, ten months.
Then you may have confessed that.
That's my concern, and, you know, the way things are right now, and the way this, you know, it is right now, I can put a real hurt on you guys. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
For our control to program the rest of the road, I would just like to say that the CSX, the only patient that was just had focused mainly on the structure, structural integrity of the bridge, of the biaduct itself. It was also mentioned that we're talking about CSX biaduct and the state route, which is true, but I would expect CSX to focus on the bridge, that's what I'm saying, but CSX officials, I have some people that are dying underneath the bridge, it's not their kids that are walking underneath the bridge, or these trucks that are stuck to the bridge. And even if we eliminate the possibility of a three D grid, my biggest concern is still parts near the bridge and the bridge, spelling early to the road, which has happened already within the process. I've seen pictures, but it's very old from both sides of the road. And I have a perception in memory that, to me, this is not about the trucks, it's a whole of the trucks, that it's a whole of railroads, the bank and the railroads, it's for the citizens of the credits, that they're live, under the biaduct, and that are going to be here, and have to prevent it from going on the turn. So, it's something, um, it's something, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Thank you. You have a question. Let's go, let's go. Go, Paul, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Reston?
No.
Spedge?
No.
You want to plan?
Yes.
Is that on the map?
Yes.
It's right?
No. This will come back as a third reading once we, we'll go over next second reading.
Second reading by caption only, the ordinance authorized in the seven months' range of intention of agreement with the Department of Transportation, which means the demonstration of other funds allocated to the city to find the support of the road.
Mr. Miller, that's a very, that's a very, very, very important question. Counsel, please. Please. If they're always green, that's, that's important. Mr. Miller? Paul, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Right.
Mr. Reston?
No.
Mr. Fatchett?
No.
Are you there?
Yes.
Is your mother?
Yes.
Is your wife?
No. Come back to third reading, Mr. Josh. This time, counsel, move to the executive session, we're going to propose to take the dump.
Hold on, my, my, my. Close the light.